On Tuesday, November 12, 2019, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. Prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering and Alderman Jettie will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, so help us, God.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Gidge.
Present.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Laws.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderwoman Malisi Golia.
Present.
Alderman Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
We have 15 in attendance.
Also with us this evening is Mayor James Donches and Corporation Counsel Stephen Bolton. Does the mayor wish to address the board?
Yes, Madam President, thank you very much. Well, first, we held a city election last Tuesday, a week ago tonight, and I want to congratulate everyone who was successful in the election. And of course, we want to thank all of the voters who participated. The turnout over the last couple of years has been higher than previously. We had over 10,000 voters in years in which we didn't have a contested mayor's race, so that's very good. And again, congratulations to you all and thank you to the voters for coming out. Also, certainly a special thank you to our Election Day workers who work a long day for a modest amount of money, who make sure that the election runs smoothly in each of the wards. And finally, to City Clerk Lovering, this was her first election, seemed like she was born to the job. She was out there registering voters and making sure the polls were working correctly throughout the entire day and leading up to Election Day, so I thought it all went very well. Certainly on a sad note, Marion Savage, who is a longtime Nashua resident, a native of Nashua, passed away in the last week or so. She, over the years, contributed more to the city than, I think, nearly any other resident. She and her husband Al were very active and were, for decades, active in the Elks Club, in youth sports. They promoted all kinds of youth activities and did just so much good for our community. Marion passed away and her wake was this week, so I want to extend my condolences to Al and her family. There are a number of children and all of their relatives, the entire family, because Marion was a very large loss for the community and, I'm sure, for the family. Madam President, I want to mention a couple of the articles that are on the agenda tonight. First, R19-190 proposes that we transfer money from contingency to fund the hiring of a chief assessor, something that we've discussed in the past for quite some time. This is a step that has been recommended by the Administrative Services Director, Ms. Kleiner, something we've talked to the DRA about, and a step that now seems appropriate. We've, I think, made enough progress in the assessing department in terms of making sure that things are systematized in the proper way, in terms of new software, in terms of better management practices, so that now is the best time to bring into the department a chief assessor to whom we can give a well-functioning department. In addition, we want to make sure, I think the delay has enabled us to ensure that we can at least find the best person we possibly can, now that the department has made a lot of improvements. So we ask, of course, I'm sure that'll get referred to committee and we'll discuss it in more detail there, but I just wanted to let you know that that is moving forward. Finally, R19-188 is the resolution that would transfer $200,000 from contingency to the school department. You'll recall that in the budget that we passed last June, we allocated $200,000 into the contingency account for the hiring of extra ELL teachers. Those teachers have been hired by the school department, but they need the money to make sure that they can meet their obligations through the entire year, so we're proposing that the money be transferred to them. And that also will, of course, go to committee, but I just wanted to alert you to the fact that that is on the agenda and alert you to the purpose of that resolution. And Madam President, that's all I have.
Thank you. Response to the remarks by the mayor. That over here? Alderman Lopez?
I just wanted to add to what the mayor said regarding elections. I want to thank all that were willing to run. I know my particular opponent and I have a tradition of running against each other. He has assured me that he will run to keep me honest and make sure that voters have a choice, so it's a little tongue-in-cheek, but at the same time, you don't stand out in the rain for 12 hours unless you're really ready to serve. So I just want to recognize all the people that were willing to step forward, regardless of whether their campaign strategy has panned out or not, because it still takes a lot just to put your name on the ballot.
Anyone else, responses to the remarks by the mayor? Seeing none, recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Board of Alderman meeting of October 22, 2019, accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication received from Cecilia K. Leonard, Deputy Corporation Counsel, regarding street acceptances.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file.
Communication's been received from Roger L. Houston, AICP Planning Director, regarding referral from the Board of Alderman on proposed resolution R19-178 authorizing the sale of city land located at 141-143 Burke Street, MAP 11, Lot 158, to Loyal Holdings LLC for $3,900,000.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have one person signed up, Stacy Lawton. Please give your name and address for the record.
Stacy Lawton, 80 Elm Street, Unit 1, here in Nashua, work for. And the item that I'm speaking on tonight is 9B, the area where it says the return for the municipal election. And just wanted to also echo some of the other things that have been said, congratulate those who've been reelected. And myself, I stood out there with my Alderman all day and ran a writing campaign. Writing campaigns are tough, but it still panned out and I was able to win my election. And so long as the board tonight certifies those results, it'll be an honor to serve the city yet again as a selectman. And right now, we don't know what the future holds for what I might do, but right now, it's just an honor to be able to stand before you, eligible to serve, and having won a seat as a selectman again. Thank you. And also a note, I did sign up for the second public comment period. You can strike my name from that list. Thank you.
Communications requiring final approval.
Communication from Susan K. Lovering, City Clerk, relative to the record of returns of the municipal general election held November 5, 2019.
Alderwoman Malisi Golia, sorry.
I would move to accept and place on file the record of the returns from the municipal election of November 5, 2019, and that the election results for the candidates named therein be declared final and conclusive, and that the candidates, having received the largest number of votes cast for the number of positions available for the respective offices, be declared duly elected for the ensuing term by a roll-call vote.
You've heard the motion, discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisi Golia.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
We have 15 yays, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Communications been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding contract award with Conway Technology Group for copier purchase and maintenance agreements, and with US Bank for the lease of this equipment.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I move to accept, place on file, and award the purchase contract to Conway Technology Group for copier purchase and maintenance agreements with US Bank for the lease of this equipment.
For the motion, is there any discussion on that motion? Alderwoman Kelly.
Allow me to be nerdy for a moment here. The Energy and Environment Committee had a presentation regarding how we could reduce waste in paper, and one of, a couple of the things were features we didn't have on our current copiers, so I don't know if you know if that was built into these new copiers. Things like you can badge in to get your paper so it doesn't print before you get to the printer, so it cuts down on waste. You don't print it again because someone threw it in the trash can or that kind of thing.
I will check that out.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Petitions? Oh, I'm sorry, now I have a, there being no objections, I'd like to suspend the rules to allow for the reading of a communication received after the agenda was prepared.
Communication from Kim Kleiner, Administrative Services Director, regarding R19-190 relative to the transfer of $95,700 from contingency to assessing for the funding of a chief assessor position for the remainder of fiscal year 2020.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Petitions?
Petitions for street acceptance, Bancroft Street, Legacy Drive, Serenity Lane, and Pilgrim Circle.
Alderman Gathright.
I move to grant petitions for street acceptance for Bancroft Street, Legacy Drive, Serenity Lane, and Pilgrim Circle.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
The following appointments of this day be entered by the Mayor Donches to the Auditorium Commission, Paula Flame, 28 Lutheran Drive, Nashua, for a term to expire December 31, 2021. Joshua T. Hauser, 9 Cobble Hill Road, Nashua, as an alternate member to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire December 31, 2020. Stacy Baxter, 38 Berkeley Street, Nashua, to the Hunt Memorial Building Board of Trustees for a term to expire December 31, 2024. Tammy Chris, 7 Bartlett Avenue, Nashua, to the Hunt Memorial Building Board of Trustees for a term to expire December 31, 2020. Charles Matthews, 17 Shelbourne Road, Nashua, to the Hunt Memorial Building Board of Trustees for a term to expire December 31, 2023. And Rosalie McQuade of 17 Reservoir Street, Nashua, to the Hunt Memorial Building Board of Trustees for a term to expire December 31, 2021, and respectfully request that these appointments be confirmed.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel, Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I will declare the report of the October 21, 2019 Special Finance Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the October 23, 2019 Committee on Infrastructure, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the October 28, 2019 Budget Review Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the October 30, 2019 Penetech Waters Special Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the November 4, 2019 Personnel, Administrative Affairs Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the November 4, 2019 Planning and Economic Development Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the November 6, 2019 Finance Committee, accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
Animal and Dog Park Advisory Committee.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the appointment of Becky Longval, 24 Ferry Road, Nashua, to the Animal and Dog Park Advisory Committee with a term to expire November 12, 2022. Is Becky here this evening? Oh, she'll be sworn in at a later date.
Auditorium Commission.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointment of Keith Wirek, 14 Court Street, Nashua, to the Auditorium Commission with a term to expire March 31, 2021. Is Keith here this evening? Keith will be sworn in at a later date.
Conway Ice Rink Commission.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointment of David Fredette, 229 Main Street, Nashua, to the Conway Ice Rink Commission with a term to expire December 31, 2023. David is not here, he will be sworn in at a later date.
Citizens Advisory Commission.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the reappointments of the following individuals to the Citizens Advisory Commission. Patricia Casey, 15 Pine Hill Ave., Nashua. Jason Tollersky, 5 Shakespeare Road, Nashua, both with terms to expire October 1, 2022. And Beth Quorm Toddham, 14 Alice Drive, Nashua, with a term to expire October 1, 2021. Are any of those individuals present this evening? Seeing none, they will all be sworn in at a later date.
Cultural Connections Committee.
There being no objection, I will confirm the appointment of Jessica Gorn, 97 Western Ave., Hennecker, to the Cultural Connections Committee with a term to expire December 31, 2020. Is Jessica here this evening? She will be sworn in at a later date.
Historic District Commission.
There being no objection, I will confirm the appointment of William Slavinsky, 46 Berkeley Street, Nashua, to the Historic District Commission with a term to expire June 30, 2022. Is William here this evening? William will be sworn in at a later date.
Planning Board.
There being no objection, I will confirm the appointment of Lawrence Hirsch, 12 Salmon Brook Drive, Nashua, to the Planning Board with a term to expire March 31, 2020. Is Lawrence here this evening? He will be sworn in at a later date.
Tax Increment Financing Advisory Board.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the reappointment of the following individuals to the Tax Increment Financing Advisory Board. Michael Serrato, 4 Water Street, Nashua. Tim Cummings, 229 Main Street, Nashua. Eric Drewart, 52 Main Street, Number 206, Nashua. David Fredette, 229 Main Street, Nashua. Chris Lewis, 670 North Commercial Street, Manchester. Sarah Marchand, 229 Main Street, Nashua. Tia Phillips, 2 Clock Tower Place, Nashua. And Arthur Spilius, 15 Technology Way, Nashua, for terms to expire September 30, 2020. Any of those individuals here this evening? Someone's going to be really busy swearing them all in at a later date.
[Laughter]
Okay, unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution R19-178 authorizing the sale of city land located at 141-143 Burke Street, MAP 11, Lot 158, to Loyal Holdings LLC for $3,900,000.
Alderman O'Brien.
I would like to make a motion for final passage of R19-178.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution R19-181 renaming Park Social at Labine as Park Social.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R19-181.
Motion before us is for final passage of Resolution 19-181. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of ordinance 19-056 updating the Environment and Energy Committee.
Alderman O'Brien.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O19-056.
Motion is for final passage of ordinance 19-056. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Second reading of ordinance 19-063 amending the elderly and disabled tax exemptions.
Alderman Jettie.
I move for final passage of O19-063, and I would like to be heard on it.
Motion is for final passage of ordinance 19-63. Alderman Jettie.
So what this ordinance does is it makes some amendments to the tax exemptions for the disabled and the elderly. This came about because a constituent of mine pointed out that there was some differences between the two that were somewhat confusing, and when I looked at the ordinance, I noticed that for the disabled, the exemption starts at $194,000, and for the elderly, it starts at $192,000, just a $2,000 difference. And also for the eligibility for the disabled, for a single person, it's a maximum income of $36,000, married couple $40,000, whereas for the elderly, the maximum income is $50,000 for a single or a couple. Also, for the maximum assets that can be held by someone applying for the disabled exemption is $125,000, whereas for the elderly, it's $150,000. I talked to the assessing department and they confirmed that this was confusing to people. So I thought that making them the same, so increasing the elderly, the minimum, the lowest level of elderly exemption from $192,000 to $194,000, and then on the income, the maximum income, raising the maximum income for the disabled to $50,000 for a couple, the same as for the elderly, and then the maximum assets for the disabled, raising that from $125,000 to $150,000 to make it consistent. I also noticed that the current ordinance, so like a lot of our ordinances, this comes from state-enabling legislation, and we can't do anything that the state doesn't let us do. And for these exemptions, the state has very detailed rules, and they're quite lengthy. And our current ordinance, when it was adopted, tried to paraphrase these lengthy qualifications into a sentence, and it left out some things and it was confusing, so people coming in to apply for the exemptions weren't prepared. They were, our assessing department would tell them they have to go back and get this, that, and the other thing. So what I did with the help of the legal department is we just copied the qualifications as stated in the state law, put them in our ordinance, if this passes, it would be in our ordinance, so it'll be clear to people exactly what the qualifications are. And so the administrative, the mayor's office, the mayor agreed that this would be a good thing, the Administrative Services Director agreed as well, and the Budget Review Committee recommended that this be passed, so I ask you all to support it.
Josh and Alderman Dow.
We want to thank Alderman Jettie for pointing out all these things, and his changes to this ordinance makes it much fairer for all involved, and at first, we were skeptical of what the changes were, but when he explained it, we all understood it and it fully passed budget.
Further discussion? The motion is for final passage of ordinance 19-063. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. New business resolutions.
First reading of Resolution R19-186 authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $1,495,000 for various improvements at the Solid Waste Department, 4 Hills Landfill, and the purchase of two refuge trucks.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Gathright, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Cle, Alderwoman Malisi Golia, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and the Board of Public Works.
First reading Resolution R19-187 authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $6 million for the design and construction of a Division of Public Works office facility.
Additional sponsors, Alder, you're already on there. Alderman Gathright, Alderman Cle, Alderman Laws, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Malisi Golia, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and Board of Public Works.
First reading Resolution R19-188 relative to the transfer of $200,000 from Department 194 Contingency Account 70112, contingency for educational priorities.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Laws, Alderman Gathright, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Karen, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderwoman Malisi Golia, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R19-189 relative to the approval of the purchase of one electric car and information technology backup service from the Capital Equipment Reserve Fund, SURF, during fiscal year 2020.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Gidge, Alderman Gathright, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Malisi Golia, Alderman Schmidt. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R19-190 relative to the transfer of $95,700 from Department 194 Contingency Account 70100, General Contingency, into various accounts in Department 132 Assessing for the purpose of funding the salary and benefits of a chief assessor position for the remainder of fiscal year 2020.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Gidge. Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Gidge, Alderman Gathright, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Clay, Alderman Karen, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Melisi Goya, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Clemmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R 19191, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $118 million to fund the design and construction of a new middle school and renovations and expansion of the existing two middle schools, Penachuk and Fairgrounds, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Gidge, Alderman Gathright, Alderman Clay, Alderman Laws, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Melisi Goya, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Clemmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of Ordinance O 19064, adding additional parcels to the Nashua Riverfront Tax Increment Financing Development District.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Gidge, Alderman Gathright, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Clay, Alderman Laws, Alderman Melisi Goya, Alderman Tenza, and Alderman Schmidt. Given its, Alderman Dowd?
Yes, R 19191, the bonding, do we not have to refer that to a public hearing on the?
Can we get through this one first, please?
Okay.
Okay. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, on these motions for bonds, I believe we have to, as referring them to the Budget Committee, has to have a public hearing on the bond at that Budget Review Committee on December 2.
Okay. Yes.
And I believe that requires a roll call.
The public hearing requires a roll call?
To send it to a public hearing.
You should accept the first reading by roll call and schedule a public hearing for September 2nd at 7:00 in the Automatic Chamber.
Okay, that's what we'll do. We'll accept the first reading and submit it to the Budget Review Committee and hold a public hearing on December 2.
2nd.
By roll call.
By roll call. Discussion on that? Would the clerk please call the roll?
For Resolution R 19186, Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Clay.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Melisi Goya.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
We have 15 yays, 0 nays.
We have to do it.
For roll call for Resolution R 19187's first reading, assignment to Budget Review, Board of Public Works, and a public hearing scheduled at 7:00 p.m. on December 2, 2019, Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Clay.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly. Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Melisi Goya.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
We have 15 yays, 0 nays. And on Resolution R 19191, accepting the first reading, assignment to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Education, and a public hearing at 7:00 p.m. on December 2, Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Clay. Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly. Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Melisi Goya.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
We have 15 yays.
Period for general public comment. We have one speaker signed up, Lori Ordolano.
Good evening, Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. Congratulations to those who got through their races and are back in the chamber. I want to thank the board for bringing forth the resolution to look at funding a chief for 2020. That makes me immensely happy, and I'm pleased that you're considering doing that. I'll come out to the budget meeting and listen up when that takes place. I want to share a little bit of information with the board. We know that the BTLA came down with a ruling the end of the month, 29th or something, that they're going to keep the docket open and ask for quarterly reports from the assessing office to follow up on what's going on with the list of measure until we complete the update in 2022. And I'm very happy with that, and I'm glad that's happening. That all came about because of the hearing on August 6, where I presented data in a report that was fairly comprehensive with some members of the community. The city took the position to ask for a continuation to counter the data that was given by members of the public. And I had a chance a couple weeks ago to get a hold of that rebuttal of sorts that Celia Leonard provided to the board up at the BTLA. I have to tell you, I was pretty underwhelmed and pretty disappointed in it, because it just showed me that this administration does not recognize any of its errors, does not recognize the things that the public has been addressing: permit capture, timeliness of permit valuation. You know, the document harped on the fact that I'm not an assessor, I'm not trained, I'm not certified, I can't make judgments on properties. What I want you all to know is while that's true, it is funny to me that when I brought my assessment issue to KRT a year ago and had the chance to go through a hearing, and I brought comparable properties in my neighborhood that I used as examples, the city then told KRT, "Ooh, go down that street again and take a look at these properties that she's called out. I think there's some problems." They didn't tell me they were doing it, they didn't tell my neighbors they were doing it, they didn't knock on the door, they didn't ask to go in, they didn't ask to look at the properties. And they took five properties that they said I identified, and they raised them $350,000, and they credited me with that maneuver. They said, "Wow, Lori, you're so good at this. You nailed it. These houses aren't right." And while I may not be an assessor, and I may not be qualified, it is amazing to me how they put that on me and said, "You did the job that we needed to do. Thank you." And that has proceeded to happen. So I think Ms. Leonard should be very careful about dissing the public in our qualifications, because we have an acting manager right now that is no more qualified than I am. And that has been a great source of problem. Now, one of the items that she highlighted to the BTLA was the fact that we were cherry-picking. We were cherry-picking data and making it look bad, when really, it just represents a little bit of data. Well, I really didn't cherry-pick. I lived in the north-end neighborhood, and I looked at every street up there and then branched out into other neighborhoods. What I find interesting is our past chief, two ago, Angelo Marino, is that his name? I can't remember. Angelo Marino, he was very much into neighborhood assessing. That was his technique, was, I guess, to cherry-pick throughout the city. So I started off doing that myself, because I was familiar with my neighborhood. But I looked at all the properties. I looked at 300, 400 properties. I didn't look at just five or six on my street. I looked at the whole north end. That's how I ended up discovering the mayor's property card. In this hearing document that went to the BTLA, my issue with the mayor's property card had always been that the permit was never captured in a timely manner. It was opened in 2007, it was taxed in 2012. There was one visit in 2008 that didn't gain entry, and the assessor put no value on the permit. And the assessor did not go to the property during the annual list timeframe by April 1. The assessor shows up a year later in September and misses the April 1 deadline to assess the permit. Doesn't get in, doesn't go back, doesn't call. Goes back three years later, again, after the annual list of April 1, when we should be capturing permits. Goes again in September. Then he captures the permit, but it's too late to assess it in 2011, because the tax bill's closing within a month. And he taxes that property in 2012. It took five years to put value on that property. And that is a textbook example of a property mismanaged. And when the assessor goes in, he makes a determination on the card that he's going to change the EYB to 1985. But he gets back to the office, and he only changes it to 1970, 15 years less. It was 1959, so he raises it 11 years. Ms. Leonard points out that EYB is subjective. It is. We have a huge problem with how subjective we have been using that. What makes one assessor determine that a house that has had the walls ripped down, the wiring and plumbing done, new sheet rock put up, new kitchens, baths, built-in cabinetry, and basically a total remodel moved 11 years? And other houses that didn't even do that moved 30? What is the difference on your tax bill? On the mayor's tax bill, it would have been 50 grand. On my tax bill, it was 160. She blows all of that off and uses his property card in here to cite as a job well done. That's when I lose faith. I lose faith that we don't take ownership for our mistakes, that we don't recognize that we have done some things wrong, and we need to change the way we do those things. So reading that document that she sent to the BTLA was wholeheartedly disappointing a week ago. But a month ago, I started a data dig. And it was interesting to me when she said, "I cherry-pick. I don't look at enough data." I hadn't read this document. I decided that I'm going to take all of the sales data from October of 2015 until KRT took the sales data of April 1, 2017. I'm taking 19 months of sales data, and I'm running a sales report. And I'm going to make a spreadsheet, and I'm going to go in, and I'm going to pull every property card up, and I'm going to pull every MLS up, and I'm going to look at all qualified sales, and I'm going to look at every picture, and I'm going to see what our assessors saw. Well, I created a spreadsheet of 10,000 data points. This was hand scraping, and this is why I tell you I want data online. So I scraped this data, I put it together, and I find out exactly what's going on when they sales adjust property. Over that 19-month period, 27 homes were adjusted. They had, 27 homes were adjusted with their EYB. The sales guys, the assessors, looked at the data, and they were very nicely done. They deserved to be adjusted. They had a total value of 8.7 million of property sales, 27 homes, and the assessors increased the assessment value by 1.12 million. Those 27 homes saw, on average, a $2,000 increase in their tax bill for 2016 and 2017, until KRT came in and equalized. But I put together this book that I sent up to the DRA, and I sent the report to the assessors today. This is all the data they didn't capture. 272 qualified homes that were very nicely done, pictures that are beautiful, updates, granite kitchens, new baths, tiled stainless steel appliances, lovely, lovely homes. They didn't get touched. And what was their value? So it was 272 properties that valued 80 million. 27 properties valued 8.7, a tenfold difference. These 272 homes saw a tax increase of $180 a year compared to the 27 that were totally screwed by the city and had to incur 2,000 a year. And that's what happened to us. I can't help but tell you how strongly I feel that we don't have competent people down there. So now I'm pulling all the 2014 data for the year. I sent this all up to the state. I said, "This is all the data. This is everything. This is all the sales data on 1,023 properties. 821 were qualified sales." That's a good take of data. They are, they are running an accuracy rate of about 60%. The Assessing Standard Board requires that their property data capture be at 90% or better. And on this 19-month piece of data, it was about 60%. That's horrendous. It's so unfair. I've asked you at this board two or three times, I've said to the Board of Assessors, "Shut down that MLS correcting. Don't do it, because you're really screwing people, and you're not doing it fairly." And that's, that's what's happened here. I'm mortified by this. I really am. I think that we haven't addressed manpower. Nice to see a chief, but you have not addressed manpower issues. Very disappointed in the budget hearing I watched in September, where Ms. Kleiner and the mayor came out and asked for $50,000 because of right-to-no requests. Clemmons, Tenza, Schmidt, who else is in there? Couple others. Nobody asked meaningful questions. What's your work, what's your manpower to cover 2,000 permits? I pulled the work log and data for the one assessor who has been in question, because I wanted to see, what's that assessor doing with permits? Not going out at all to capture permits. Why didn't somebody ask, "Is everyone doing permit work?" The answer would have been no. Instead of blaming the public for putting forward right-to-no requests, why don't you address your manpower and look at what they're able to do? Because you don't have the manpower to grab these permits. And once again, people are getting taxed on them, and then there's a whole slew that don't get caught, and they get a pass. All of this update that goes on is dependent on the quality of the data and how you maintain it. Outside of an update, there's very few things you can do. You can use sales data to correct a property card. You can use permit data to adjust, and abatements. You can occasionally go after a segment of properties that you want to adjust, but that is almost never done, and I don't know of a case where it's been done here. You have very limited means to make changes, but you have means, and you're using them so ineffectively, inaccurately, and non-uniformly, that you created a mess in your data. And it's just, it's unbelievable to me that it took 10,000 data points and data scraping at this level to be able to prove that Celia Leonard's position, that we are cherry-picking, is really not the case at all. And I don't know if the RSA is applied to the public. I need a lawyer to answer that. But the RSA through the ASB that puts, that puts 90% accuracy on the data, and when I measure all of the sales data and I see 60, can we do anything about that? Can the public complain? Say, "We're not meeting our standards"? I don't know. I don't know if I have any grounds. But I can tell you, it's not good enough. And in 2014, you only had 400 property sales. You're asking two assessors to each correct one home a day, four times a week, not even all week, and you're not capturing that data? What's the excuse? It's not like they're bombed. It's not like they're busy with thousands of property sales. It was a slow economy, and we didn't capture the data. I had to pay 5,000 more, but a lot of houses didn't.
Ms. Ordolano, one minute for public comment. Thank you.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Remarks by members of the board? I'll start over here tonight. Alderman Clemmons.
I just want to thank everybody who came out and voted on Election Day, and to all the candidates who ran, who won and lost. It's always good to put yourself out there. Certainly appreciated. The people who came out and voted appreciated it. And finally, I just wanted to belated, but I wanted to wish everybody a happy Veterans Day. Thank you.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to thank Word 1 for, again, proving that we are the best in the city. 25%, topped everybody. Thank you for coming out, and it was really great seeing everybody. Thank you.
Anyone else on this side? Alderman Melisi Goya.
I'd also like to thank everyone who came out, and congratulations to all of those who participated, and especially those who will be inaugurated in January. And thank you to the city clerk. I guess this is prep for what you have in the new year, so congratulations to you and your workers. And then also, thank you to those who came out for the Veterans Day Parade. I think the weather was really iffy, but I think for those who came out, it turned out to be a much nicer morning than we anticipated, so thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
So the, one of the things that we, our So what are the things that we are looking at? That got introduced tonight was the bond to build a new Public Works building. And I've already been, I've already received comments from people from Ward 5, and I want to tell them that at the Board of Public Works meeting, I was assured that people would have a chance to be heard about this issue. And so I guess the first opportunity will be the budget, the bond that's coming before the Budget Review here Committee on December 2nd. So, you know, I'm not encouraging people to oppose this. I'm just saying that if you have concerns about it, please take advantage of the opportunity to get your voices heard by either coming to that meeting, or if it's not possible for you, communicate with the people on the Board of Public Works, the people on the Budget Review Committee, me, the other Alderman, the Alderman at large, to let us know what your concerns are, or whether you support this. And hopefully, once people understand what's going on and what the reasons are for it, they will support it. But your opportunity to make us hear what your point of view is, is coming up, and please take advantage of it. Similarly, the Budget Review Committee on December 2nd will be hearing the bond issue on the new middle school. And here's another opportunity for people to voice their concerns or ask their questions. And we're all available to provide information, and please take advantage of it. Thank you.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I feel like everyone always says everything before they get to the middle. Either way, you start. But I was just going to say that I was happy to see the contingency for the education funding coming through. It's a great point to see that we were able to hire those people for our schools. I know that was really important for them. I was going to bring up the middle school, and that will be brought up on the December 2nd. I'm looking forward to hearing more about that, and also hearing from people in terms of what their questions are. I know I've already got a couple. And we came out for Veterans Day Parade. It looked colder and looked like it was going to rain, but it ended up being a very nice event for everyone. So I appreciate everyone in the city who participated, but also helped make that happen. That's it.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. I too would like to thank everyone who came out to vote on Election Day. It was not a bad day unless you were standing there for 14 hours in the rain and cold. But also to Ms. Lovering and her staff, congratulations, you jumped in with both feet. Now wait till the primary, which is going to be a lot of fun. But everything seemed to have gone smoothly. I heard a lot of good compliments, so that's a wonderful thing. And on another note, I too would like to give condolences to the Savage family, and also to the Elks because they were such a big part of the National Lodge of Elks. And I know that I worked with them for over 40 years, and Marion was always there by Al's side, whether it was in the kitchen, in a parade, and back in the early '70s when the city gave out the Service for Youth Award during 4th of July. Al and Marion Savage were the first people to receive it as a couple because they always did everything together concerning the youth of the city. And it is a tremendous loss, I know. So thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd also like to congratulate Ward 1 on being the best Ward. But I would like to thank Ward 4, everybody who showed up despite having multiple jobs, being single parents. Thanks for making the time, although we might want to do slightly more turnout for the primary. I also appear to have received on my desk a petition from most of 8th Street regarding on-street overnight parking, and it is printed on the back of a parking ticket. So I'm guessing that the parking department has been out. I got it, guys. So I am planning on giving this to City Clerk Lovering, and maybe we can put it in the minutes of the Committee on Infrastructure. We are in the middle of working on approving and finding a vendor for a comprehensive parking plan for the city, and we're going to hear more about that in the committee. So we will take it up. And then on a completely unrelated note, Mayor, we have coffee with the mayor tomorrow at 8:00, right? Is that Judge DeBose?
Yeah. Can you please try to be on time this time?
I'm promising nothing, and the parking is terrible.
Alderman Loz.
But at least you come.
To the rest of you.
Yeah. Congratulations, Lovering. I'm sure that was a daunting task. You did an exceptional job. I'd like to congratulate everybody who ran here and won. I sincerely believe that the outcome is the best for the, at least, next two years of this board. I'd also like to point out that since Tuesday, at least 70 people have come to me and complained that sports betting didn't pass, which is an odd coincidence because it didn't pass by fewer than 70 votes. I would just like to take this opportunity to remind people that there are elections every November, and it would be who of you, if you care about your community, to show up and vote. So thanks to the 16% of eligible voters in Nashua who did make it to the polls, let's aim a little bit higher next time. Thank you.
Alderman Clay.
Yes, I have a couple of things I'd like to say. I'd like to also give my condolences to the savages for the loss of Marion and so on. And I read her obituary and was just blown away, and much of what Alderman Karen had said about the awards that they had been given as a couple and so on. So knowing how much that they've done together, it's going to be very difficult, and my condolences go out to the family, and especially to her husband. I'd also like to thank everybody here on the board, as well as the public at large, who have contacted me to, for well wishes for my surgery. As you can tell, my voice is slowly coming back. Luckily for my husband, I'm not allowed to yell. And whispering is a big bad no-no, too. But he still keeps saying, "What? What?" I can tell him he's going to get his hearing changed. But anyways, I'm doing better. I decided to come in today rather than sitting home and pining away about the pain. It would be much easier to be here. And I'd like to address two more things. One is the Veterans Day Parade. Because of the surgery and so on, was not able to walk in the parade. And I usually so proudly walk with my veteran husband.
You had no dogs, either.
No, I know. You could have ended up with a dog. Yeah, no dogs, and my veteran husband was not with him. I'm always very proud to walk beside him any day of the week, but especially during that particular parade. He was drafted back in 1969, and he did his time. When Uncle Sam came calling, he was there. Luckily, we don't have the draft anymore, but he was one of those that didn't go to Canada, who did serve. And I wrote a little piece, and I'd like to kind of talk to that just for a second. Veterans are very special, and the veterans that we have today are extraordinarily special. They do many things that the veterans of yesterday didn't do. But the one thing they don't have to do is they don't have to hide their uniform when they get off a plane because the people here in this country treated them the way they did when they came back from Vietnam, or just Vietnam era. So for all of the veterans, thank you. For all of our Vietnam-era veterans, as well as our Vietnam veterans, I salute you and thank you so much for everything that you did. And whether you got saluted back then and appreciated then, you are appreciated now. Okay, the other thing that I'd like to talk about is the election. For the first time again, because it was four days after surgery, I was not there. But my husband was there with signs, stood in the rain because he knows that 14 hours in the rain or in the cold and like that, I was there from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and the last election for state rep was there till midnight for the count. I did get there for the count, so I was there, and I did get there very early in the morning to vote. I was 22 in the voting. So I'd like to thank everybody who came out. And while Ward 1 may be number one, they also have more voters, so let's just put that out on the table there. But I appreciate, I appreciate all the people that come out in Ward 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9. I'd like to, as Alderman Loz brought up, I would like to see more people coming out to vote. And I've been getting a lot of phone calls, too, about the sports betting. I think there was confusion, and I'm sorry for that. I think people thought that, they didn't realize the state had already approved it, that they were getting a choice to approve or not it was in the state. The only thing they were approving is whether or not it would be handled here in Nashua. And I think a lot of people were confused by that. So it doesn't mean it can't go on the ballot again. Maybe next time around, people will come out more. And let's hope for that. And I'd like to thank everybody for their vote on November 5th. Thank you so much.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, I'd like to thank all the people who came out and supported me in Ward 2 and re-elected me for a couple more years in this position. I also want to thank all the people who work at the polls, going in and out during the day. They work very hard, they work long hours and for very little pay. And also, Mrs. Lovering handled the election perfectly. Everything went smoothly. And congratulations on all your staff and yourself for doing a great job. The other thing is, is I'm standing at the polls, as everybody knows. Paul Bergeron helped sue during this election, and he was coming out of Ward 2 for the second time in the day, and he was smiling and whistling. And I looked at him, and I said, "Is this the least stressful election you've ever had?" And he says, "Yes, I'm not the city clerk, and I'm not running, so this is great. No pressure." So thank you very much. And thank you for the words. As a veteran, I appreciate it.
Alderman Gaffrey.
I'd like to thank everyone that was out there, Sue's staff, all the many people that I know that were at different polls, trying to help everyone get re-elected and what have you. A special thanks to my family and some friends in particular that was all over the city trying to get everyone elected. And I'm just happy that we're all back together for the next two years, at least. And I'm grateful. And I'm sorry I wasn't with you guys yesterday, but I had other responsibilities on Veterans Day, so I haven't been able to have a Veterans Day here in this state, in this city, since I've been holding office because I hold another office. And unfortunately, Veterans Day, it's a really huge thing. As a treasurer, I have to be there. But I heard good things from my family that was there, and they said they had a wonderful time and a great turnout. So maybe next year, I can make some other arrangements and actually be there myself. That's it.
Alderman O'Brien.
I'd just like to thank everybody that came out, and particularly to our new clerk, Sue Lovering, who was your first one, and you did a great job, and all your workers and everything, so it should be noted. And then also a personal thanks to all those people who hold totes at the polls, some for me, some for you. We all got to see the sun rise, we all got to see the sunset, you know? It's a very long day, you got to be rained on a little bit and everything, but look, we had a bunch of fun, so really enjoyed it. So thank you for coming out.
Thank you. I would like to also send my condolences to the Savage family on the loss of Marion. She did a lot of great things for the community. I also like to congratulate the city clerk and all the poll workers who did a fantastic job at the polls. And that said, committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien.
Commendations to the Infrastructure Committee. You wanted to approach me afterwards. We've got Thanksgiving coming up. For those who aren't working on the Butterball, you know, you might not want to go to infrastructure if you are working on the Butterball. So come see me, we might be changing the date to see if we can get it in there.
I will be there.
Petition in hand. Other committee announcements? Alderman Malisi Goya.
Yes, PDC will be meeting here next Thursday, Tuesday, the 19th. And in addition to legislation that's been referred to the committee, Director Cummings will be there to give an update on Mohawk tannery. Thank you.
Other committee announcements over here? Human Affairs is tomorrow night at 7:00 p.m. Our Board of Aldermen meeting in December, our second meeting, has been moved to Monday, December 23rd, because December 24th is Christmas Eve, and that would be our meeting. So the second meeting in December will be Monday, December 23rd.
Will there be eggnog?
No.
No.
I have scheduled the caucus for the Alderman-elect for next Tuesday, November 19th, at 6:00 p.m. here in the chamber. And that's it. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 8:35 p.m. Thank you, everyone.
No, I'll be there.
How narrow is it?